The meeting to order and Renata, could you please call the roll?
Lou.
Here.
Bozeman.
Here.
Dishram.
Here.
Holzhouser.
Here.
Campbell. Reed.
Sow.
Here.
Thank you. We all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And I would ask for a motion to open the meeting to a public hearing for the FY18 tentative budget.
I move to open the meeting to a public hearing for the FY18 tentative budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bozeman and Sow moved and seconded, open the meeting to a public hearing. Roll call vote please.
Lou. Aye.
Bozeman.
Aye.
Dishram.
Aye.
Holzhouser.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Sow.
Aye.
Motion carried. At this time, Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer any questions the board has regarding the FY18 tentative budget. Anybody have any questions about the tentative budget?
So I had a question and you're going to answer it today on the Dolph, the salaries we pay for the Dolphins and then it looks that we pay out 80 grand, we provide payroll service to us and the Dolphins.
We provide payroll service and what that it balances, it balances out in the end. The tentative budget right now has.
A deficit.
Has a deficit because for I put in for the revenue for the building fund, what we typically get from the Dolphins, they hired additional coaches and more expensive coaches, so it is higher than, so the expenditures are higher than what the revenue is saying right now. When I do the final budget, it will, it will match because it'll be based, the revenue will be based on what we actually pay.
But your budget proposed doesn't match up, that we're going to get the inflows of the money?
The tentative budget that's right, that's there now, just, it does not match. No, the expenses are higher than the revenue at this point in time. But in August, in August, it will match for the final budget because when I did the tentative budget, I used the revenues that we were expecting and since the tentative budget has been put together, further expenses, expenses have come that are not, that were not planned, so when I do the final budget, it will be based on the year end numbers.
So it's more of a timing issue?
It's an in and out, it's a timing issue. It's an in and out number. They pay 100% of their payroll. It's just a matter of when it was paid and that it came out more than what we had budgeted for this year. And I use the FY17 numbers for the revenue for the Dolphins because I didn't know any different because it was based on what the final number was for FY16.
So I guess if you put in, I guess I don't really understand tentative to actual budget, so if you do a tentative budget, why wouldn't that just match up now? If we're going to get, if we're going to pay out 80, wouldn't our revenue be 80?
It will be when we do the final budget. The tentative budget is just so we can start the fiscal year with a budget for everything else that we need to do to start the year. The final budget will, it will change, there are other areas in the final budget that are going to change as far as grants and things as well, based on year end numbers, that it will not be the exact same numbers that you have in the tentative budget. We do it so that we've got something to start the year with since the actual budget doesn't get approved until September.
So it will change several times.
Yes. And it has changed, yeah, I mean, the tentative budget has been put together and it's changed, the, the working final budget has changed, it changes on a daily basis. I mean, it changed last week, the final budget changed last week with the OSF information.
I, I get all that, I'm just thinking, since it's an outside entity, if we're going to get, have an $80,000 annual expense.
It was.
Why wouldn't we have revenues of 80?
We should, and it was a mistake.
Okay.
I mean, I just didn't change it, I didn't make the two numbers match whenever I did the tentative budget. Because I used, I was not, I didn't look at the revenue and the expenses together, I looked at what the book said.
Okay. So it was just an error?
Yes.
How much more are we spending this year than last year?
In?
Total.
I don't know that off the top of my head. Are you talking all funds?
Yeah, I was just wondering, all funds. I know we had that discussion before and it was like 1.6 for the staffing, but I'm just wondering.
I think I looked at the numbers today, it looks like our expenses are going to be seven and a half percent more than last year's budget, on budget side. So 2.3 million dollars more in spend budgeted this year than last year.
Yeah, let me pull the numbers because I don't know off the top of my head what it is and I don't want to talk numbers that aren't real. And you're talking across all funds, Brian?
Just, just the ed fund. Some of the other funds went down, but the ed fund is the one I looked at.
The ed fund is the one that went up?
2.3 more.
Oh, but some of them went down.
Yeah, the other funds went, some of them went down. But the ed fund was the one I looked at, 2.3, seven and a half percent increase in spend.
It's okay. I was just curious. Other questions?
Other questions while I'm looking for this tentative budget? Just wasn't, wasn't that raised last month?
When you went through and you had that slide deck, wasn't it in that slide deck when we went through it?
That we went through as to what the differences were?
Right, right.
Um, it's.
Last month?
I think you presented that to us, right?
Is there a question or is it just for the information?
Yeah, I don't need to know right now. I can look it up. No, no, no. I just thought, it's okay. Okay. But Brian, do you want it, do you want me to just send it to you by, I mean, do you want it now?
I've got it.
Okay. So it was in, so.
I've got the budget from last year to this year, went through that.
Okay.
So was there a question?
I was just curious how much, how much it was increased.
So I think we had it on the slide, it was part of the presentation before, so I guess, you know, unless there's a question, these are the kind of things that we get beforehand, so we don't spend a lot of time sending.
I just thought she might know off the top, you know, off the top of her head.
So you can email that.
I will email that.
I think Renata found the slide, but she's not sure, but in the interest of time.
Isn't the presentation for this, for the budget? Yeah, and that's what I'm looking at. I don't see the slide though that shows year over year. That's what I.
We did go through it last month.
I think it might be in the written summary, it's in the written summary, I don't think it's here.
It was, it was basically 30 million, 443 was in 2000, that was our budget in 2017.
I got it right here.
So you have, just the answer?
It's 2.3.
Okay.
2.3 for, for education.
Yeah.
And I was just wondering, because some of them went down, so it wouldn't be 2.3.
Right, it's not 2.3 across the board, across the board, it's about.
Because I know we had some changes because some of the staff were not hired.
Right, and those, and, but all of the numbers for growth and all of that are in the tentative budget. Nothing as far as what the staff has been hired is in, has been taken out of the tentative budget.
Oh, that's true.
All of those numbers are still in this because I can't, I can't, the budget has to be out for the public to view for 30 days, so I can't, once I get it out for information and we set the hearing, I can't change it. So it's, so.
So we're still in that position where a number of positions may, the money for that may go into contingency if those people aren't hired.
Yes.
There's like, what'd you say, 105,000?
There's about 105,000 out there that would go into contingency for the positions that we don't believe at this time that we would have to hire.
But we really, I mean, have no idea until.
We have a couple, we have one building that is closed, a kindergarten, but I know for a fact that they're, I think, six over right now, so as that number continues to grow, there comes a point where you don't want to transport, you know, 10, 15 kids, it doesn't, it's not economically, doesn't make sense, so as those numbers continue to grow, we may end up adding a section, but we could drop kids, so.
And that's not much contingency at 105, that's what 215s.
215s above, yeah.
But I mean, is that the total contingency? That's not the total, total contingency number, though?
No. Is that with the 29?
That's not the total.
That's not the total contingency, that, it, the OSF money, if you take the OSF money that will come off of the books that, let me find, we're losing in the ed fund, 227,817 dollars in, from OSF property taxes for the ed fund. We have currently, there's 34,436 sitting in the budget, in the tentative budget that you guys are looking at right now in front of you, there's 34,436 contingency in that budget. The tentative, unbudgeted amount that's not in contingency or anywhere else in the ed fund is 118,000. And the tentative, the money that is sitting in the tentative budget for growth right now is 105,000 dollars. That 105,000 dollars, there could be another position out there that we may not have to hire, but I removed that when I ran those numbers because we're, because depending on what happens with those elementary numbers, we may likely have to add a, another teacher at the elementary level, and I did not want that in there when I was running the numbers to show whether or not we did or didn't have a deficit budget.
So the 105 doesn't include, you're counting on having to hire that person?
I'm counting on having to hire that person. So officially right now, we have 170,000 dollars sitting in growth.
Because that one has been taken out?
Yeah.
And just a question about that OSF money, we don't have to pay back back years, right?
We will, we will have to pay part, we will have to pay part of 2015 back, we do not know yet what that will be or how it will come out, it will, the county, they've never actually had to do it, so they're not exactly sure how to make it work. So, because that's the treasurer's office rather than the assessor's office, so I've been asking them a lot of questions, how does it get paid back, how long do we have to get it paid back? 2015 will be it, it's only 2015.
Is it a whole year or a partial year?
It's a partial year of 20, well, no, 2015, it'll be the whole year. So we'll have another 200, probably 215,000 that has to be paid back for 15 because their value wasn't as high as it was in 16.
So is that the whole piece, the entire piece of real estate, is, does that tax exempt now?
All of it, except what I, the email that I sent, I believe all of it is tax exempt except for 27% of the Center for Health. The Center for Health, 27% of the Center for Health is not tax exempt and those numbers are taken out. But the really big chunk of the property on 91 that were the taxes is their main hub, all their IT and everything like that, that was the big.
So the Center for Health, the whole 27% of that building?
Is.
Is taxed.
Is taxed. I know.
So that.
And most of those are all for profit, what in, the businesses in there.
So what we owe for 2015, will we pay that, will it be paid out of reserves?
It'll be paid out of reserves or it'll be factored in when we look at tax revenue probably for 18, 19, almost a year and, a year behind, it will come out of that tax revenue in 18, 19 and could be spread over several years, so it could end up being a $50,000 hit for several years rather than a huge chunk. And that's part of what we're, and that's part of what, once the treasurer figures it out and they know exactly how we can handle it, because the other question I had was, does it all have to come, how does it have to come out?
Right.
Where can I pay it from? So those are the things that we're, they don't even know for sure if we can take, if it has to come out across the board as far as what the levy rates were for those years or if it could come out. Could we just take it from working cash? Can we just take it, you know what I mean, from reserves across? So those are the things that I'm working with them on and Nicole does, she, I think we're learning this one together, so, along with everybody else in Peoria County or several others in Peoria County.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Okay, if anybody, if there are no more questions, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Would anybody want to close the board? Would anybody in the audience like to address the board regarding FY18 tentative budget?
Okay.
If you would like to come forward and if you could sign in here.
You did.
Oh, you did, okay. So I need to leave. Okay, before addressing the board, I would like to remind you of our process. Per Board Policy 2230, we ask that when addressing the board, please identify yourself and be brief. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. The speaker is asked to please conduct oneself with respect and civility towards others. Individuals less than 18 years of age are permitted to address the board if accompanied by his or her parent or guardian. The board typically does not engage in two-way conversations during the public portion of the meeting, and any follow-up response will be addressed by the administration at a later date. To be respectful of others and protect, to protect confidentiality, complaints against individual students, staff members or board members either named or unnamed shall not be orally presented to the Board of Education. Such complaint should be put in writing, signed by the person or persons making the charges and delivered to the Board of Education Secretary. So at this time, if you could come forward to the podium and please speak into the microphone and state your name and the topic that you will be addressing, please.
Thank you. My name is Nathan Ruby and I'm speaking in favor of the line item in your budget on, for the marching band uniforms in this year's fiscal year. There's three of us that are going to speak tonight, and so I'm going to just talk a little bit about some of the extra, I don't even know what word I want to use, but, but the, some of the extra things that marching band teaches to students that go through the marching band program. Our marching band program here at Dunlap is a top-notch, high-end, one of the best in the state of Illinois. When we roll into a marching band competition and they see Dunlap on the side of the trailer, other bands, you can see their shoulders sink because they know that we're there and we're competing, and that's not good news for them. But there are four things that I just want you to know that from my family and my children when we got out of the band program. First of all, it was friendship. Our oldest, who's now 24, and he came all the way up through the Dunlap program, was in the high school marching band program, and he started in the band program in fifth grade, and at the end of fifth grade, he asked if he could quit, and we said, no. At the end of sixth grade, can I quit? No. End of seventh grade, can I quit? No. Eighth grade, can I quit? No. Ninth grade, can I quit? No. Tenth grade, he got packed up, and he said, my grades would go up if you let me quit band. No. Junior year, can I quit? No. Senior year, coming off the field at University of Illinois, the last competition he would be in, he came off the field, put his arm around my wife and I and said, thank you for not letting me quit. So other than asking in the glory of having your 18-year-old tell you you were right, which was good enough, in a, so, the friends that he has today, the party that he went to this weekend, that had eight people at it, six of them were his band friends from this school. So in band, you forge friendships that you don't forge in other places. Second is teamwork. Band, marching band especially, is the ultimate team sport. It is the largest team that we have at Dunlap. And the reason I say that is every player plays every play, every game. So in marching band competition, everybody competes. So there's no changing of players, there's no, these players sit, these players play, everybody plays every play, every game. And so it is the ultimate team sport. So you learn teamwork. Third, sacrifice. And every extracurricular activity in this school, I don't care what it is, athletics or academic extracurriculars, you've got to sacrifice time. Band is the same way. It is a significant sacrifice of time that these students put into this to make this band as excellent as it is. And my fourth one is excellence. Every one of our kids, we have a 24-year-old junior at Monbury State in Kentucky, and it's, will be a senior year, our youngest, every one of those kids have experienced the excitement of being a grand champion winner in a band competition. And it teaches when you win, it teaches when you work hard and you put in everything you have into it, sometimes you get to win. And when you win, that is awesome. And so you get that experience, that, that feedback of all of that hard work that you put into it. So I know budgets are tight, we just talked about that, I know every program is important, all I want you to do is to ultimately vote on this budget is to understand that the band program is just as important as every other program that we have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Nikki Cole, I'm too here to speak on behalf of the band and thank you for your consideration, I greatly appreciate it. My son's interview's not in light that I'm going to speak about it, but I am permitted to know a little bit. I'm a parent who believes that their kids need to be involved, not just academically, but in the extracurricular activities that the district provides. And I searched for a long time with my son to find what activity that was going to be for him. And I'm so pleased that when we got to Dunlap High School and we really got involved with the bar, the band program, how much I saw him develop, grow, blossom, not only from a personal standpoint, but from an academic standpoint, his grades improved, and I truly give that benefit to the band program and the direction that he's had for them. So I wanted to speak in behalf of those kids who are looking for something that may not find that fit in traditional activities and that can find them in band and how positive experience that's been for me as a parent. Additionally to that, I had my older daughter also go through the band program, who will be playing in the symphony at Bradford University as a result of Love A Band here at DHS. I have two nieces that have also gone through the marching band program, one of them just finished at the Conservatory of Second City in Chicago, and is taking all of those skills that she learned as a leader in our marching band program with her as she continues her endeavors. She's just accepted a position where she'll be the head of television marketing for State Farm, so I'm very, very proud of her. And so much of that I truly do attribute to Dunlap High School and the marching band program. So thank you so much for your consideration, I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Lisa Lewis. Many of you know my daughter, Lily, she graduated this last spring, and will be continuing on with the marching band at U of I this fall as one of their color guard people. So clearly, we're all very passionate about marching band. I'm actually here tonight to tell you a little bit about the condition of our existing uniforms, which is what we want more money for. While my daughter was part of the color guard, I slipped over and helped with the band uniforms because the color guarders, a different uniform clearly when they're on the field. This past year, now recognizing that numbers change from year to year for the band, this past year, we outfitted 98 varsity, 22 cadet instrumentalists, 16 varsity and eight color, or cadet color guard students for a total of 144 participating students. When you look at our current enrollment at Dunlap, that's roughly 11% of our school that's participating in the band program. That is one of, if not the largest, participating programs within the high school. Picking uniforms is very much like a puzzle, and if you've ever been out here when we're doing it, it's, people are crawling over the floor and, you know, pinning things here and there, and, so this past year with the 122 students that wore the actual marching uniform, 24 of those uniforms are 20% needed repairs of some sort. And when they talk about repairs, they're not talking about, just some of them were yes, sewing on a new look and hideings that came off, but many of them were adding lengths and straps because there's a boy that's six-four and he's still growing, and we know he's going to need a bigger uniform next year beyond what he's got right now. It is putting a new zipper in because the zippers have split because they are so old. It is making sure that these uniforms, the repairs are becoming more and more complicated, I have to tell you, over the last four years of working with them. As a side issue to that, repairs and alterations that need to be done, it's becoming increasingly difficult to find people who are able or willing to work on uniforms to actually perform these. A lot of people will sit down, sure, I can whip up an eye on, or I can whip up, you know, whip stitch up the sleeves to make sure they're the right length, but literally to take a uniform apart and put it back together again to make sure that this too small uniform is going to fit this right-sized kid because we don't have a uniform to fit him, it's getting fewer and harder between. I'm graduating, I'm, we graduated, I'm leaving, there's very few women coming in behind me that are willing to come in and do some of that kind of complicated sewing that's been required for the last four years that I've been to do. And I've literally been at band competitions where I had to sew a kid into the costume because the zipper on a uniform broke right before we were ready to go out on the field. So I always traveled with my sewing kit and literally have sewn a couple of kits into their uniform and then had to come out of it after they get off the field. Another aspect that's involved with our aging uniforms is the way that they look on the field. Our band competes in five to seven competitions throughout the year, most of them in central and our region. And as, as Nathan said, they've been very successful at band competitions. One aspect of being judged as a band at a competition is your visual effect on the field. And an aspect of that is what your band looks like in their uniforms. There are field judges who are down on the field, walking around with you while you're performing, they can see the condition of those uniforms, and if the uniforms are not properly fitted and if they look ragged or torn, they can see the tears even as much as I try to repair it and arm the ribbon sleeve, which happens, accidents happen, they mark us down for that. And while a couple points here and there don't seem like they would be a very good deal, when you're dealing with other schools in the region who've replaced their uniforms over four to six years, you're competing against brand uniforms, a lot of sharp, and I mean sharp on the field. Our uniforms are 17 years old. That means that band alumni that are currently 31 to 35 years old wore these uniforms the first while they came out of the box. Think about that for just a second, how many other programs within our school put kids in uniform that their parents could have possibly worn? I mean, that's, that just kind of brings me out to, you know, if, you know, your, your parent who's now 36, as a 14-year-old, I could be wearing the same uniform that they wore when they were in school. So I would urge you to try to find the funds of the budget this year and go ahead and replace those uniforms as much as possible and let these kids know that their hard work and their achievements matter to the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board regarding the FY18 tentative budget? Okay. I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing and note that Tom Haf, oh, I'm sorry, oh, okay, Lisa Lewis, Nikki Cole and Nathan Ruby addressed the board. Okay, if you could note that in the motion. Is there a motion to close?
I mean.
Okay. You don't need to mention their names, okay.
I'm hoping you move to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, Teresa Holzhouser, move to close the public hearing, seconded by Cheryl Bluth. Roll call vote please. Bozeman?
Aye.
Dishram?
Aye.
Holzhouser?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Sow?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. At this time, we will move on to the public participation portion of the meeting, and Dr. Parker will begin with the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody, welcome to our June meeting. We will start with our safety minute. I'll need to first check to see that we have volunteers to call 911, first aid responders and also volunteers who are certified in CPR, if you could raise your hands, please. Thank you very much. Our exits are off to my right and my left, and the AED machine is in our main hallway. If you weren't here, the focus of our committee, the whole meeting tonight, was our athletic program and also our athletic leadership team. Goes without saying, this has been the, the best spring in history here at Dunlap High School, including our girls' track and our boys tennis teams winning first place in state. All of our teams contributed to win the middle line A all sports trophy for the first time in school history, and I remember a, a board meeting many, many years ago, we sat around the table and I remember someone saying, I just can't support that because Dunlap will never be able to compete in the middle line A. And so kudos to our coaches and our students and our student athletes because here we are with the trophy, so a job well done. It's a very busy time of the year and a lot of that is the upkeep of our athletic facilities during the summer. You'll probably notice that our dugouts at the baseball field are already being replaced. I believe they started the press box in the last couple days, as well as the painting in our high school library. Looks to be almost complete. Some of our parking lots have already been sealed and striped and we've started our required inspections for the regional office of education visit that will be this fall. We haven't been down to the auxiliary gym, it looks like we have a brand new gym down there with the lights, it looks like a brand new facility, so thank you to our Board of Education for supporting our efforts to keep our facilities upgraded. It may be summer break, but our teachers are very busy learning new ideas for the classroom to help out our students. We've had over 90 teachers sign up to participate in multiple sessions throughout the summer months. Every Wednesday in June, we have Canvas tutoring sessions with 30 participants in the first two Wednesday sessions. And we're also running a book study on the innovator's mindset, and that author will be our keynote speaker at the Corry County Institute on September 1st. I believe we have about 35 teachers plus several administrators participating in that. So thank you to Mrs. Bowman and her team of teachers and our admin team that's helping to lead out those opportunities for our staff. We updated our enrollment today. It's 4,361, which I believe is 92 fewer students than we had last month, but we still have about 60 students who are current students, but they are not registered for next year. And we're also getting calls every day about new students, so I anticipate that number will continue to rise. I was talking to our tech director about it, about the current enrollment, he said, "Well, I just added 12 new students a half an hour ago as I was uploading information," so they're still coming. As a note for our general public, starting in July, our regular Board of Education meetings will start at 6:00 instead of 7:00. And we also had one FOIA request from the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers for billing invoices and certified cable records. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. It's now time for public participation. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? If so, please raise your hand. Okay. That concludes the public portion of the meeting. The board will now move on to information and discussion items. School activity account reports are available for the board's review. Are there any questions? Information regarding the high school random drug testing report for the month of May is available in the packet for the board's review. Mrs. Caslet is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions? Okay, no questions, so, okay. Information regarding K-5 science materials is available in the packet for the board's review. Mrs. Bowman is available to answer any questions. Any questions? Okay. Information regarding employee handbooks is available in the packet for the board's review. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer questions. Any questions? Discussion was requested as a future agenda item regarding the Board of Education's use of social media. As a reminder, there should be, not be any names used during this discussion, and I will now open this up for board discussion.
That was my request.
That was yours.
Yeah, because there was a complaint that we received, and I just want to make sure that we were diligent as far as getting a response back to the parties who put in support of the complaint. So just as a board discussion, I know we've had it over a period of time with just different, different small segments. At one point, we were going to do it during the retreat, and that got pushed down. We do have it rescheduled, but, you know, we don't have everybody here, but if the board wants to open that discussion up, we can, as far as the issue and what was in the complaint. I think everybody had a chance to review that, and I think the main complaint was just that we were implementing a policy for our staff and employees of the district as far as their use of social media, and the complaint was asking that the board be, I guess, follow those same guidelines and be cautious when we use social media as well. And, you know, I think it's well taken. I don't know who's going to be responsible to respond, you know, officially, but I just think as a board, we need to be responsible, I've said this before, just to be cautious of what we're doing. We set the example for the district, and if there's something that we're doing that would be, you know, appear in any way to be out of line, that we should rethink before we post that. We're not employees of the district, so the policy does not, you know, it's not, we don't have to follow that policy per se, but I would just think that regardless of having a policy in place, that you would just use that, you know, that common sense to not do those things and to be the example for others to follow, especially if we're going to approve policies for the people that, you know, that work for the district.
Any other discussion?
I think we discussed it briefly, but agreed that we would discuss whether we'd like to implement a policy, not drafting it now, but entertain some type of policy. And I think that's what we're supposed to be doing here. And I think everyone agreed to do it in an open session, so I guess the concern is, but the question is, where do people stand on that? I know one of the questions Brian asked when we were dealing with the employees, whether we were going to do the employee social media policy, is how many social media policies are there out there, you know, or are we blazing new ground that doesn't need to be blazed? And I did a Google search, and it was over 30,000 hits. Now, I didn't go through, I went through about five pages and blazed over, but every school district, it was school districts that had the social media policy for employees because it protects the kids as well as protects the district, you know, if there's any misconduct with employees. The question here is whether, if we're asking employees to do this, then should we not also lead by example? Question was, are other school districts doing that? And I did a quick search, and if you do, I didn't have much time, right for me. They do pop up, and so I think there's something to work with, and I don't know if you had a chance, so anyway, was Texas Association of School Boards has a policy that they recommend, and they call it a social media guideline. I don't know that it has to be policy. And it's general, you know, it's not specific, but it calls to maintain a certain standard of conduct as a school board member on social media. Also, New Jersey has it, and then there's a lot of different school districts that haven't looked at it, but haven't passed anything. I think there's another one, too. But anyway, I just, I tried to copy and paste really quick. So there's material out there. We wouldn't be blazing new grounds on that. I think we would be leading by example, coming up with something. We could have help with Rita to do that because she would probably have examples that we could discuss, and we can do that at the retreat and really be productive on that. As far as having board policies, whether we have to be an employee or not to have such a policy, we've got 25 board policies that we're governed by, so, but this would not be the first policy that would provide guidance for us. So I think the question really is, is there consensus to take a look at this and support this with the help of Rita?
I would. It mediates our retreat.
I would recommend that we look at the board norms and possibly add something in the board norms about using professionalism and whatever you want to word it. I think that would be worth our time and possibly look at board norms. I'm not sure if a board policy is absolutely necessary, but I think board norms is where we might want to address that.
Yeah, and I voted no on the employee social media one, so I would say no to this as well. I just, it'd be tough to be the social media police.
What do you think, Teresa?
You know, I'm going to echo several statements tonight. I know I've said this many times before, you know, I feel that we, as well as the administration and the leaders of the district, right, we're the Board of Education, and we need to lead by example. And I feel that, you know, if we put a policy in place for everyone in our district, which we did, we voted on that we need to follow something very similar. So whether that be, you know, I think you had a great point, Cheryl, where you, you know, did the research to see what other schools have done, what, you know, what's best practice, what, you know, we should do, and it's something that I think we should discuss at the retreat as well.
I'm fine discussing it at the retreat, if that's what people want to do.
I think after it is discussed at the retreat, then as the administration or the board president can, we could draft a letter and explain to the DEA what we've done, how we're going to address it, or how we aren't going to address it, and respond in that way.
It just seems like there is consensus for trying to come up with something, whether it's a norm or a guideline or a policy, something that shows that we're leading by example.
Well, I mean, for me, it would depend on, you know, the details, right? So, you know, I'm fine with researching it and talking about it further.
I just think it's pretty subjective as to what you think leading and what Karen might think leading is or something else, so that's why I'm not fair to it, but I'm only one.
I mean, I think it's tricky to do. I do think that board members, since they aren't employees, are accountable to those that elect, you know, constituents, and the people they represent are the citizens as opposed to being employees, so I think there is a difference, but, you know, I'm fine with looking at it.
Are you okay with discussing it further at the retreat?
Yeah, we can discuss it at the retreat because we don't have the full board here tonight. I think it's a good idea to discuss it at the retreat and then to take a look, maybe, Cheryl, if you could share with us some of the examples that you've researched.
Sure.
And, you know, and like I say, our school attorney had advised the initial policy to be in place for the employees of the district in order, in an effort to protect the district. So that's, to me, that was something that we obviously shouldn't go forward with, and I think as far as the board, if we can have some guidelines, if it can be added to the norm, or if it needs to be its own separate guideline, we can discuss it at the retreat just so we have something in place. I think it just keeps everybody with a good understanding of what we're intending to do.
Okay, you could do that? Okay. Okay, any more discussion on that item?
Again, I just would like to add a caveat that at the board retreat, our time is obviously trying to work on, looking at. I just would like to have some idea of how long we're going to allot for that discussion because I think it can take up a lot of time, and I just don't want to see us spend a lot of time on social media when we have bigger fish to fry personally, so.
I agree, it should be a limited amount of time. I don't think it should dominate the retreat, but.
Well, right, we have a number of items to discuss. But I agree with that, but I think once again, it's very important. It has come from the DEA to us, so I think it's very important for us to take that and discuss that. I don't know how much time should be given, but once again, it's very, it was their concern brought to us, so I feel that we have an obligation to do, to have that discussion.
You don't agree, Brian?
Oh, I, that's fine, if you want to discuss it at the retreat, there's no votes. I didn't want to see a half hour devoted to that topic, or 20 minutes, I just don't want to see us for our three hours spending, you know, two and a half hours of our three hours talking about social media items. I just think it's unproductive.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with that. I think we have a number of items to discuss. Should we, you want to talk about a set time that we put towards that? We have three hours?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
When you put the agenda together, can you do that for each item that's on the agenda?
I can ask Rita to do that.
You know, if that's how we're going to do it, if we're going to give each topic a certain amount of time. That's a good idea to have Rita maybe. Have the agenda, and if we have a limited time, make sure we cover everything.
Sure.
Is everyone good with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, and I think, I think we're down the road, right? I mean, we think we have at least four people at the table that are saying that we could have some form of guideline, is that what you're saying?
Some discussion.
I think I'm hearing guideline.
We're going to go to the discussion retreat, where it comes out, we don't know.
Right, I don't know until we discuss it. It could be a few sentences under a norm, it could be a page about what is appropriate or what is not.
It may not be agreement, so. I think it's to discuss for a half hour and see if there's some consensus that comes out of it. Maybe you have guidelines and maybe you don't.
Right, well, I just think that if you, we can keep having these conversations and we can keep dancing around it. If we move, if we really are concerned about time, we'll move the needle forward, and if there are four people that are saying we are in agreement to have something, we're not agreeing on what that something is, we're not putting the words on paper right now, but if we agree to something, then we can have those, a couple options prepared and come to the meeting ready to discuss those, as opposed to having an open discussion yet again on whether we're going to do something or not. Because I think this is about the second or third time we've had some form of conversation. So if time is of the essence, excuse me, sir, I'll finish. If time is of the essence, then we probably should start formulating instead of continuing to discuss.
Why don't you come up with some ideas, and Cheryl can come up with some ideas, and that way you'll have some things for us to look at and then we can.
Right, we don't want to waste our time. If there's not four people who feel it's important enough to move forward, and I heard you say maybe add something to the norms.
Yes, I said that would be a great possibility.
So we're in agreement that we're going to look at some options?
Right, absolutely, absolutely.
And just discuss at the retreat.
Right, so we bring some things forward so that we're at least prepared to have the conversation, so we're not just still discussing the idea itself.
It always sounds like we don't have consensus to definitely agree that we're going to do something, not just look at it.
No, we don't.
I'm just checking because I'm hearing.
No, I don't agree to that. I'd like to look at it.
I know you and Brian, oh, that's really clear, but I'm just, I'm hearing at least three, but, and I'm hearing Abby, I think something.
My statement was that I thought it would be a really good idea to discuss it, whether it's a policy or putting something in norm, I don't know at this point until we have a chance to sit down and look at what the options are. But I understand that you feel it's very important, and I know the DEA thinks it's important, and so we will discuss it. I think it's a great idea to discuss it, and we'll come up with some options, what we think would be great. But as Dawn said, the full board is not here either, so, you know, when we get to the retreat, hopefully the full board will be there. I plan on being there. I've arranged a vacation around it, so hopefully we'll know.
Okay. Any other discussions? So Cheryl, you'll bring some and.
And Rita. I think you were going to discuss it with Rita, right? Oh, yeah, I was going to have it at this meeting, to get information from Rita. But, okay, she'll bring it to the retreat.
Right, and we'll have Rita set kind of a time limit for each agenda item so that we can make sure we cover everything. Okay, any other discussion on that? Okay, there's information regarding future agenda items. Dr. Parker received one request this month for discussion at this time to determine if the agenda item will be a future agenda item or not. Is there additional?
That was in the packet from, you had given me that.
Oh, right, that was mine.
If you wanted to discuss what you're looking for, and then we'll just be looking for a consensus on what to do from there.
Right. So we had talked about the fact that even though Mr. Winn is listed as our treasurer, he doesn't really do the work of treasurer, and really those responsibilities fall to Karen. So just wanted to look at what we need to do in terms of, you know, do we need to have her bonded for this? Should we change the formal responsibilities and just look at, at that recording and that, those responsibilities? So are there any questions about that?
Are we just looking at the responsibilities of the two? I guess I need some more background just on the whole idea.
Okay.
And how long have we done it this way and, I suppose, change?
I don't mean to interrupt, but I think really what we're looking for is, is do we have a consensus to bring a lot of that information back? Because I don't think we're prepared for all that tonight.
Right, just to kind of do a report on, on just that.
Exactly.
What, where have we been and where are we now? And just making sure that we're in line with the person who's actually doing the responsibilities being listed as that and making sure she's bonded and, you know, anything else that we may need to change as a result of that. But, yeah, they're not, I don't think they're ready now to actually present. So they would present some recommendations, maybe?
We'll present the information in our petition, yes, in July, so that the board requests, they're going to be active on us.
Okay.
We want to make sure that the board wanted to discuss it as a whole before we move forward.
Okay. And you feel it's necessary to?
I'm not following the directive.
She said.
And David and I talked about this, too, and I know that Karen talked with him as well. I think right now, the way the structure is set up, David is named as a treasurer, but he's really not doing the true treasurer duties. This came out of the meeting that we had with the auditor, and just some discussions about what are the true roles of the treasurer, who's doing them, and what's the best way to set it up. And as I think Russ Rumbold told us in that meeting, every school district does it in a different way, and this district has done it in different ways as well.
So looking at school code is what.
We're really looking at school code to make sure. And I will say this, I can present this tonight, no matter what decision you decide to make, yes, treasurer's bond needs to be done in my name, whether it's my name and David's name, if he stays as the named treasurer or someone, you know, my position needs to have it as well, so.
So that at a minimum, I think.
That at a minimum would be definite that we would want to do that.
And the auditor was?
In agreement.
In agreement with that, yes. Yeah.
That's fine, that's all, yeah, I just wanted to know that. I just don't want to spend time on anything that, you know, you don't feel is relevant and is obviously, the auditor, I mean, we've had audits for how long?
We've had this. We've had audits for, it's not necessarily that the structure is wrong, it was more a conversation of how is it really working and what's really happening.
Go back to the duties of what you're actually doing.
Going back to the duties of what.
What you're actually doing.
What I'm actually doing. So it's not anything, we're not doing anything wrong, per se, it's just a matter of is it really, the structure really set the way we're actually doing it.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Great, thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Are there any other new requests? So this concludes the information discussion items segment of the meeting. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any clarifications or discussion items regarding the consent agenda? If there are no clarifications or discussions, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda as presented for the June 21st, 2017 Board of Education.
Second, it's been moved by Teresa Holzhäuser, seconded by Cheryl Luke. Is there a discussion? Can roll call vote, please?
Dishon.
Aye.
Holzhäuser.
Aye.
Bowles.
Aye.
Zouin.
Aye.
Luke.
Aye.
Bowlesman.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to the action items segment of the meeting. The bill list and treasurer's report are included in the packet for review by the board. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer questions. Any questions? Okay, ask for a motion to approve payment of the bills.
I move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of $3,692,252.53, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Brian Zouin, seconded by Cheryl Luke. Is there a discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Holzhäuser.
Aye.
Bowles.
Aye.
Zouin.
Aye.
Luke.
Aye.
Dishon.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. The district investment report is available in the packet for review. Mr. Winn is available to answer questions. Are there any questions for Mr. Winn?
Oh, I would just like to add, maybe when we come back with the treasurers, is if David, he could give a presentation of our investments, where they're at, and what kind of return rate, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we got that schedule.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you. The agreement with EI US Marketing is included in the board packet for review by the board. Dr. Parker is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve the agreement with EI US Marketing as presented?
I move to approve the agreement, EI US Marketing as presented.
Second, it's been moved by Brian Zouin, seconded by Dawn Bowlesman. Is there a discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Bowles.
Aye.
Zouin.
Aye.
Luke.
Aye.
Bowlesman.
Aye.
Dishon.
Aye.
Holzhäuser.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. The FY18 budget is included in the board packet for review by the board. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer questions. And at this time, why don't we bring forward the people who were up here before to continue that discussion? Do you want to do that now?
No, this would be, you have to decide what you want to do with the band bids, and then, well, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
We're addressing lacrosse.
Yeah, oh, you want, yeah, that's fine.
We were going to finish that discussion, correct?
Katie.
Pardon?
Katie.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to pick up, pick up where I was left off. If we can't, I mean, go with option two, and restate athletic budgets, I would just propose that for July, we go with option two for lacrosse for approval.
Okay, and are you looking for, or do you want to have discussions about that?
Really, you just want to decide what you want to do with band uniforms, and then you also need to decide if you want to add the lacrosse to the budget.
Okay.
And if so, what you want us, if anything, to bring back for July, or if the board wants to wait, or-
Okay.
And then I heard a lot of other things that were, well, we're supposed to do with athletic supplies.
So we can have just general questions about the budget this time?
Yeah.
Okay, so any other questions about the budget?
Well, Karen, where do we stand right now? Because I know originally there was $50,000 that was left over, and you were, we were trying to decide, the initial discussion was, would that go towards the band uniforms, and that's in no way enough to cover all of it. But that and lacrosse is on the table for that same amount of money that was unbudgeted?
Right, what, there, the $50,000 that we were talking about with band uniforms and lacrosse is in the tentative budget that you guys have in front of you, that has not changed. So really, and that money, it's in the budget, it's not necess, right now in the tentative budget, it is not set for anything specific, it's just sitting there to go.
And it's how much, did you say?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty, okay.
And it was a breakdown of fifty, of $35,000 for band uniforms, and $15,000 for lacrosse is what we had discussed previously. The, so as far as boys' lacrosse goes, that money is in there, as far as band uniforms go for the action item that's coming up, that money is in there in the tentative budget. With that, and the OSF exemption that's coming out, there's $29,000 sitting in contingency for the FY18 budget. Twenty-nine thousand. So it is not unusual that that's how much money is sitting in contingency, that will be sitting in contingency when we do the final, final budget. And we've had less than that before, but been at zero before, so it's not, it's not something that can't be done.
Well, just earlier, we were talking about a hundred and some thousand in contingency. Where, where, what budget is that?
That is what's on, that was, those were the numbers that, for the, before the OSF exemption comes off. That's what those numbers were. That's how, because Karen had asked, those are the numbers that I figured if we were going to be in a deficit with the OSF money coming off the books. So we were losing right now in the tentative budget, there's $34,436 in contingency. There is $118,165.20 in unbudgeted money, not in the budget at all. And then we have a tentative budget for growth that is in there that we are not expecting to use of $105,000. If you take that money that's sitting there, that's not, that we don't believe we're going to use, you subtract the $227,817.40 from the revenue loss, we have $29,783 that is sitting in contingency when we do the final budget. That includes the OSF exemption, the money that we just lost last week.
And that includes budgeting for lacrosse?
That includes the budgeting for the boys' lacrosse. Does not include the budget, it does not include a budget in, to annual, annuals.
And when you say it includes budgeting, are, are you thinking the $35,000 that you have set aside?
No, it's not in contingency. It's, it's set in there to be spent, it's not in that contingency.
And it's fifteen.
Fifty thousand, so really, right now, we have $84,000 in contingency.
Okay, so, but of that eighty-four, fifteen?
Eighty-four is set, eight, of that eighty-four.
It's in the budget.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure, so you're saying right now, what, what do you have budgeted for boys' lacrosse?
$15,000.
$15,000, is that sustainable? Is that, is that the amount that you would need to sustain a full IHSA program?
It is with the numbers of the proposal, yes.
Is that with the $350?
With the $350 activity fee, yes, that's sustainable year over year. It's the issue of the girls in the Title IX that is not, depending on what we need to do in that.
But even, even beyond, I guess, even before we even get to the Title IX issue, in adding girls' lacrosse, my, I guess my biggest concern, first of all, is that, that activity fee, $350 to $450 per athlete. So we have ten kids that come next year, we approve it, and they can't afford the $350 to $450. As a school district, what, what do we do?
Well, I think Tom, just jump in, Tom was here earlier, he presented, they already raised $4,500 with the youth program, and he could use that for scholarship money, correct Scott? Right? So that's, that's something, obviously, that's-
Yeah, as an independent organization, they could donate that money to kids to how they saw fit. And I, as I explained to Tom, they could not give that money to us in our activity account, and we could not dole that out for kids' scholarships. But as an independent organization, if they chose to, that, that'd be up to them. But that would be out of our control.
So if they don't use all of that for scholarships, can they use it for the program?
Yeah, sure, they will take donations.
And that would be in addition to the $350 activity fee?
Right.
So.
And, and would you, if, for games, we probably would charge admission for the lacrosse games.
Yeah.
So that revenue's probably not included in our budgetary numbers, so that would be a little bit of a, probably not a whole lot.
Yeah, I would think that if you're going to charge an activity fee, and have officials, it would be prudent to charge it in advance.
And then if we get extra money from some of these club teams, that would help offset. And I think our net number is about nine grand now, because we're paying money today.
Yes, the net number is, yeah, the net, because we're already paying for part of lacrosse.
And it seems to me our coaching stipend seems to be a little bit higher, we're currently paying, so we might be able to make some-
But they'd be consistent with the DEA, what they, with the current, the comparable position like baseball, you'd have to negotiate that.
So we have to do that.
Yeah.
That's an absolute, you can't say if he's making two, or whatever, fifteen hundred now, whatever.
It's not a, it's not a given that it has to be that, but it has to be negotiated with the DEA.
So you could probably get some savings other than $6700.
Possibly, depending, that would be-
You could. We use the comparable as baseball.
Okay.
So that would be out of our hands, but that was our best guess.
Like, comparable in terms of numbers?
Yeah.
So we could maybe get our net cost of increase down to maybe six or seven thousand, it's only, it's nine right now, under the current situation, right?
Yeah, I guess, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Some of the cost for the $15,000 that's budgeted, are those, are those not annual costs? Are there some equipment, or any, or are all of those annual costs?
Yeah, let's see.
I think it's in the presentation materials.
Yeah, I think the-
I just can't remember.
The students are going to pay for most all the equipment.
Okay.
Because they all play travel, it's a sport, it's like tennis, and you need to hit your own stick and stuff.
Yeah, I guess, and I guess that's exactly my, my biggest concern, is that, you know, I think it's outstanding that they raised that money, the $4,200, and that they're, you know, I'm sure they continue to fundraise and do things. I just think as a district, you know, it's a new opportunity, it's obviously a well-liked activity, a sport that kids are really catching on to quickly, is what I'm hearing, a lot of colleges are bringing it on, you know, there's a lot of things that are happening in that area. We have 25 young men who are interested and want to be a part of that, and those funds cannot sustain that. And we as a district have to be ready to provide something, right? I mean, you can't tell a kid, you can't participate because you don't have $450 and you don't have your equipment. So I'm just thinking, we have to be prepared to buy the equipment, and be prepared to not, not be able to accept that $350 to $450 activity fee. Because if, we're not going to turn kids away. So we've got to look at the other, I mean, this is the rosy side of it, and most of the kids do have their equipment, and I think that's great, and they're fundraising money, but the realistic side of it is, if you get 25 kids that can't afford that, where are we as a district, and can we sustain that sport with that, with those numbers? Because I think it's going to grow. I think it's going to become more and more popular, and we need to be prepared for that. And I know you can't prepare for everything, but I'm just thinking, we've got to keep that in mind.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, that's the risk, that, and I think we, we talked about that somewhat last month, that that's the risk, that ultimately, if we, ultimately we're on, the district is on the hook for, if we have a student that can't, ultimately we are, we can't, we can't exclude a student because they can't afford to pay the fee, or they can't buy, if we adopt it as an IHSA school sport.
And is that only a student who is eligible for free lunch, or is it a student who says, I just can't afford it?
I think there, I think by law, it would be your career reduced lunch students that we can't do it for. I think ethically or morally, it would be any student who says they can't afford it, that we know that that's actually true. I think-
And that's what we do right now, with the $100?
We, yes, if some, if there's a student, even if they're not on career reduced lunch, if they, as far as the activity fee goes, the principals know, the teachers know what kids, there are, I tell you, the families who probably need the most help are the ones that are just above that grade, and that, just above that reduced lunch number, that don't get any help, that probably need more help. So we would look at, so we look at those at a case-by-case basis, but.
So I think, too, we need to get back to the conversation of the options, you know, we've got a lot of numbers in front of us. We've talked about whether we'd have to pay the activity fee for free and reduced lunch, and on top of that, the equipment, which is estimated by the Athletic Leadership Team, is $500 to $600 per player. So theoretically, we could pay about $1,000 per student who couldn't afford it, right? Five to $600 plus $350, a little under $1,000. So that's the reality, hypothetical in that. But going back, though, to the two different recommendations, I think the administration is looking at not asking us to say yes or no at this point, but give them time to get the sufficient facts and data to make the right decision, and we'll have more budget numbers come in. And there's no rush to do it right now.
Right.
And it's not even open for us to designate yet. And then the Athletic Leadership Team, I think this is what Brian was speaking to, their recommendation was to fund, if we're going to fund this, we need to first fund to get everything back up again for the people, the sports that are already at the table, before adding another sport to the table. And so that recommendation, my understanding in the conversation, was that as, the coaches hadn't been coming to the administration, asking for additional funds, because they just didn't think it was there. And the Athletic Director had indicated, you know, yeah, the funds aren't there. So the administration was not notified that, hey, you were asking the question, are we holding the lacrosse hostage, or how did this come about? It's just the coaches then said, well, wait a second, we haven't been fully funded, you know, we're already a dumb-lap team. So I just wanted to clarify that, that it just wasn't brought to the board, it wasn't brought to the administration. But now it is, because it became an issue as the Athletic Leadership Team looked at adding lacrosse. And it's their recommendation as, you know, an unbiased party to, if we're going to do this, we first need to fund all the other sports. Now, I think that's a question, either we talk about that first, you know, and get a consensus to give these guys guidance, or we talk about getting a chance for them to get more facts and data, and then we can look at the budget numbers to see if we can go ahead and restore the sports programs. And then the other, the third choice is, let's just go ahead and let it go, let it rip, you know, and it's in the budget, and so we'll do that. And then the Title IX thing, we can try to figure that out later, which I wouldn't advise doing, you know. And I think looking at competitive cheer as the option to get the participation numbers up, we don't know anything about that. So I don't think we can vote on something that puts our district at jeopardy without A, doing the facts and data, and gathering that information. I mean, I just think that's the rational thing to do for the district, is to get all those numbers before we pull the trigger. And also looking at whether cheer could get us where we wouldn't be, as our attorney said, a lightning rod for a Title IX lawsuit. And that's, financially, that's not a-
But that's, that's as we sit today, lacrosse is even a program, so we're, if you're going to go Title IX today, that's what it is. But I'm going to just go to lacrosse. They've had a high school program here for six years. This isn't something-
It's a great program.
Just let me finish. So they've been here for six years. Last September, our A.D. came in front of us and gave us informational item, that it's going to go, 2018, IHSA presented the informational item, there wasn't, we had plenty of time to vet all this stuff, and now we're going to kick the can down the road for these lacrosse parents that have been here in support of the program, running the thing, you know, got kind of side-swiped a couple months ago, and now we're just kicking the can down the road for $9,000 for a program that won the state club championship, you know, when they were the club team, and they'd been ranked ninth in the state, and got kids going on to universities and colleges. I just think, to kick the can down the road on this program that has been existence for six years at this high school, I just don't think it's fair.
We have a month. A lot of information can be gathered in a month. Can we come back with some information next month, based on the questions that you have, talking to our legal counsel, talking to the girls, or trying to find out if there's an interest, and then we can talk about it next month?
Yeah, I guess my concern is the need to start working on the affiliation with the conference, and working out whether there, there are other teams to co-op with, and as, as they said, that takes time. So I would rather get the ball rolling, and at least have, you know, have the option that if, you know, if we do have a conference, that, that they can go forward with it.
So you want to vote yes now?
I would want to vote yes.
To have approval, to have approval in July for option two.
We can't vote today.
Right.
I guess, I think there's just too many unanswered questions, you know, to Abby's point, you know, we need to take time and make an educated decision based on information that we still are gathering, it sounds like. I mean, it sounds like we've got multiple things going here. One, can we afford it? I think everybody would love to have it, I don't think that's part of the issue, that we don't feel it's important, or we don't think the kids deserve it. I think the issues are, do we have the money? You know, can we do it, honestly? Are we just trying to fund something that, and one of the proposals is that two years where we reevaluate, I'd hate to put something like that at IHSA, and they'd have to pull it back, because we can't fund it. I mean, and to speak of what the coaches are asking us for, we had that discussion in the committee meeting, I mean, the Athletic Leadership Team is telling us, and the coaches are saying, hey, we, we need our support I mean, and, and to speak of what the coaches are asking us for, we had that discussion in the committee meeting. I mean, the athletic leadership team is telling us, the coaches are saying, hey, we, we need our support back for the sports we in, our funding was cut. And if the recommendation is that we add that funding back before we start yet another endeavor, then perhaps we should be listening to that, you know, and then we haven't even discussed the Title IX issue. With, if we add boys, we really do need to add girls and that's a whole nother stack of money, coming on the heels of you losing how much funding last week in the last seven days? I mean, so it just seems like there's a lot of movement and the timing is, I get it, it's great if you can plan ahead and that's wonderful, if everything can work that way, but honestly, you don't have to make a decision until, what, next February? Is it? That if you're actually gonna be, so you still have plenty of time. And so I, I just don't think we force the issue. Not to mention, we, we have the band uniforms, uh, issue that's out there. We have, I have parents that I've talked to, I mentioned to this before, about wrestling. And we talked about six years on the books. I mean, I think, I've been on the board almost, I don't know, close to seven and way before I got here, there were parents asking, why don't we have wrestling? And it's almost the exact opposite. I think we're the only school that does not have, in the middle line now, that doesn't have wrestling, you know, I mean, so that's like the exact opposite. The parents are like, what are you doing? You don't even have wrestling here, you know?
But that's a great question, but if you've been here for seven years, why don't we?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So that's why now that we have a new athletic leadership team to discuss it, now that, that we have an athletic director.
But I don't know how that plays into the lacrosse.
Well, I think it all plays in together. It's one pot of money, it's one school district, all the students who wanna be involved, something that's really important to you, something else may be really important to somebody else. And I mean, you know, so I think we all have to take our own personal.
I think it's important.
Information aside and make a decision that's based on the entire student body, right? Not a selective group of students, but of the entire student body and how that affects the entire student body. We can't, we can't be personally involved in those decisions.
What were the numbers of wrestling, do you recall?
No, I don't.
And has there been a club, uh, wrestling program and I guess why?
The wrestling is a, it's a unique addition to add wrestling at the high school level. It would first start as the middle, you know, you'd build your feeder up, you know.
We don't even have a group of faculty at this point.
No, actually we do.
We do have parents that are interested, but not, not a.
In Chillicothe, they have a club, I think.
Yeah, and I think a parent contacted you, Karen. Did you ever reach out and talk to her?
I haven't. She, she wanted to get together after her vacation.
Okay, cause she, she.
She was gonna reach out to Katie Castle.
Okay, good. I'm glad she's connected. I know she talked to Lisa, but she was one of the main parents that advocated and was telling us, she was sending us email about all the kids that are winning awards and that were at the, at the top of the game in, that are dumb-lap students, but they have to go elsewhere. So they, they exist, but we just haven't, for whatever reason, that never got formulated and brought to the forefront like lacrosse did. And that's unfortunate. So I'm just saying, let's take the time to make sure we got our eyes on everything and before we make decisions.
I just wanted to come here. You know, and I've read through all these emails. I'm very concerned about the risk. I would like to understand the risk that we have associated with this based on our legal counsel and what they provided to us. I think there's too many unknowns right now and I think we need more information because if there is indeed a risk, and I don't know what that financial risk would be if we would get, and maybe you would know that, Karen, I don't know what that would mean to the district if we have a violation of Title IX.
A lawsuit.
It would be, how would you? I don't think anybody knows. I don't think necessarily anybody knows what the financial risk would be. Um, Cheryl, you might be able to talk to it more. It's more, it's, they are gonna come in, do an investigation and what the investigation determines, you would be adding, you would be adding more than you are, um, you're taking the risk of having to add more girls' sports, girls' activities specifically because of the, um, the proportionate ratio. I think the other thing is, is once Title IX gets involved, they do not go away. I mean, Pegan High School has been dealing with it for a year and a half, two years, and, um, they talked to their superintendent and that, and, um, and I think Lisa has too, but she said, they are to the point of they're looking at the swim parks. Are they the same brand and do you have the same number of swim parks for your girls as you do for your boys? That's where they're at. And so it never, it never ends. And so it's, um, and so it can become very, very costly and not only financially, direct finance costs, but staff-wise and just all of that.
Could, anybody can sue you at any time for any reason. I mean, we all know that. On our, uh, athletic leadership committee, do we have an attorney that's on that? Are you an attorney, Mike? Okay. You're really involved with the athletic, is it, is it without reason that we could, I mean, is it within reasonable thinking that maybe he as an attorney could talk with our legal counsel and get the athletic committee involved in this? And, and maybe come up with an opinion on risk? I don't know.
I mean, when I talked to our attorney, I just pulled up the email to confirm it, but I think he's pretty clear. He said that I cannot recommend adding just a boys' team that allows girls to participate.
Okay, so we offer girls' lacrosse and five girls show up and we don't have to have it. We, we did that with softball.
Correct.
We offered a girls' softball, first two years, we had enough players, third year, nobody showed up and so therefore we didn't have to have it. We were not in trouble with Title IX.
Exactly.
And I just wonder, my only point about the survey was, you know, at the beginning of the school year, could we do the survey and see if there's actually more interest in competitive cheer since that came out high on that one survey as opposed to lacrosse, girls' lacrosse? I'd just like to see which one is the one.
Why not ask both questions?
Right, I mean, you could ask the question, see which one scored higher and then add whichever one was higher because I think that's what for Title IX, you're supposed, supposed to do is, is ask the kids.
Based on interest.
What their interest level is rather than, than kind of guess.
And again, I would refer us back to advice of counsel and his legal memorandum that he gave us where he suggested not proactively doing a survey.
Especially given that we have just given.
Yes, okay. So can we simply recommend the offer?
Yeah, but I just think it's futile to offer both. I mean, to me, if the girls aren't interested in lacrosse, it's not really fair. I think if you really wanna do it, we'll probably look at compliance, you know, if you wanna really be Title IX compliance tonight, then we need to look at everything and then do it the right way and do a proper survey. It is, there's some really interest in girls' badminton. That's a, that's an IHSA sport or a girls' water polo, whatever, but what, they might be. But if you don't just throw lacrosse out there just because you're adding a boys' lacrosse team, that's just not, I don't think that's appropriate. Now, the survey may show otherwise, but.
Well, and if he says we can use the last survey, maybe we simply look at the last survey and see.
And there might be not any girls that want any more sports. I mean, that survey could come back where there isn't much. Who knows? As long as you've done that, then you've, you've met one of those criteria.
So the most recent survey, which one is higher? Which one is the highest?
Competitive cheer was the girls' first choice and lacrosse was girls' second choice.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Competitive cheer was the girls' first choice and lacrosse was the girls' second choice. Wrestling was the boys' first choice and wrestling is the boys' second choice.
Yeah, but.
Lacrosse came in second.
Yeah, but the thing is, most boys already know we have a lacrosse program, so the survey would have to be changed.
But that was the students.
Right, the students are picking that even though they know we have lacrosse, they're still picking wrestling. I mean, I just think that there's a lot of unknown. I think in what we're asking, the questions we're asking, I think proves that. So I just don't think we're ready to make a decision on anything. I think we let, um, Ms. Castle, you know, get settled in her position, give her the questions, let her, you know, balance it out, you know, and that survey is very telling and that was done, what, a year ago?
Last spring, I believe.
I have to rest in the air. I guess it would be good to look at the question though and see if the students were confused and probably thought that wrestling was already, or, I'm sorry, lacrosse was already offered.
But it is, you know, it was, I mean.
So this is, I think the question is, what do you wanna add?
If you've ever been playing here.
Just says rank your order of interest.
I, I mean, I think we're getting down into the weeds again with the bigger, you know, issues that.
Well, I made a recommendation, I made a recommendation.
That's what I was gonna say, so maybe just a head count.
Yeah, maybe a head count.
To go with option, I said, I'm gonna put option two, approval next month.
Abby, where are you?
I agree with Brian.
Okay.
Too many questions. Not, next month, we're not gonna be able to answer all those questions in a month.
Um, I, I'm okay with option two.
I think there's too many unknowns, too much risks. Really, really too much risk to this.
So we're three to three. Should we ask Beth?
And so, just to be clear, you guys wanna approve option two next month?
I wanna be able to vote on it next month. I think you have ample time to get some information in a month of time. And I believe that, I believe Beth sent me an email.
That she is supportive of option two.
Option two, so.
What the board wants, that's what we'll do.
Okay. Okay.
Do we know specifically what information you'd like us to have next month?
What does it sound like?
Just the option two, that's all we needed.
For boys and girls, or are we just adding boys or?
I think we better follow the attorney's advice.
So can we board one day?
I think you do a survey in the fall.
So now we're at thirty thousand instead of twenty-nine. I just wanna make that clear. We have that twenty-nine thousand to play with and so now if we are asking to approve both, that's thirty thousand. Just to be clear.
I think we, I think we go to, I think we go to approve boys' lacrosse and, and option two, where they funded the three fifty, um, my proposal is to do that in July.
And not, and not girls.
And then I think we have discussion items to figure out, how do we do the survey? What do we do in the fall to figure out how, is this girl, do we do a survey to look at girls' programs?
But then I'm okay with that, but we've gotta put that money in the budget for another sport as in the budget.
Yeah, which might take time for a survey and if it happens to be competitive cheer, then you got back, you had time to implement it the following year anyway.
But I don't know that we can wait till the following year to implement it.
We're implementing boys this year.
Right, we're adding the boys.
In February.
In February, so we.
Or March, whatever.
But if we approve it in July, then it's implemented for the seventeen, eighteen year and we'd need to look at, I just need to know if you want me, I would need to put money in to pay for a girls' sport addition as well.
I would just, I would just do the boys right now and then we'll tackle the girls later.
I think, I think that, yeah, I don't think you can do that though, right? I mean, based on what you're saying, Cheryl, what the attorney said is that don't go down the road of one without having already investigated the other because you, you get yourself caught into a Title IX situation. So why would we force this through when we don't have to have it done to February and put ourselves in jeopardy as a district? Why would we do that?
Well, we wouldn't be signed up.
There's no time constraint.
It wouldn't be formally, uh, initiated right until February?
At least it gives them.
We'd have to declare by February.
Yeah, so it gives directions, so.
Right, but why would we give direction, false hope to parents if in the end we can't afford to do both based on legal action that the attorneys told us? Why would we, why would we do that? Why would we go into next month and put ourselves in that position?
I'd be okay with putting the fifteen thousand in for the, the girls', uh, lacrosse as a contingency in case, you know, that's what the result is after the further discussions. Or for competitive cheer, which I think would be less because the program is already in existence.
I just, I just don't understand what the rush is. I, you know, I just.
Well, I think it's, if they wanna be a successful team and have a conference to play in and get it all lined up with the other teams, I think they, they need that time.
Yeah, but, but if you have, if you're gonna be forced to have a girls' team, you're gonna need that time too.
We don't know, yeah.
Right, we don't know. That's exactly why.
But we know we have a boys' team.
But that, that's exactly why you would hold off. I mean, if it, if it was, if there was harm and there was a true time constraint and you had to know and you had to get it set. But I think you're gonna need to know, right, going into fall, whether you're gonna offer a girls' team way before February so that people, if they have interest, they're gonna know so they can say yes if they're interested or not. I mean, you know, I mean, you're, you're the administrator of the building. I mean, Karen, you're the financial person.
I will, as far as from the finance side, if, and from the risk side, as far as listening to what Jay said, whether we know what sport it is we add or not, whether it's lacrosse, cheer or whatever it is. I think that money would have to go into, that money would have to be set aside in the budget or knowing that some of that twenty-nine thousand dollars is now sitting in contingency. Will be used for another sport, whether we know what it is right now or not, but that, that really takes your unused contingency that's not really allocated for something else down to about fourteen thousand instead of the twenty-nine thousand. I will, I will put together the final budget however the board directs me to do it. I will tell you, I will, I will tell you, I won't bring back, I will not bring back a deficit budget under my recommendation. This is not a deficit budget, but I will not bring back a deficit budget under my recommendation.
And, and so if we go ahead and we, we earmark to money, then we're down to about fourteen thousand. And you said earlier, and then the athletic leadership team who, you know, we've asked to provide overall unbiased leadership recommends that we bring all the other sports up out of their budget, um, fifteen percent down. And you said earlier, that number's about fifteen thousand, seven hundred. So if we do this, then we can't restore. We will.
Perhaps that's something we could look at for the following year. We added a lot of initiatives this year to this budget, a lot of initiatives for one year. And so next year, we need to start being more cautious, especially with what Mr. Ryan has told us, but there is money in the budget. A budget is a working document. It can be done. So, okay. So, right now, we can make it, we have three, so you need to know what additional information, correct?
That you need, right.
That was your question. And so, um, what additional information would people like to see?
And what exactly are you gonna vote on? Are you voting to?
I think, what I'd like to see is a recommendation on which of the, uh, female sports, you know, whether it should be competitive cheer or, uh, lacrosse and whether we use the, like, athletic advisory committee or?
I would tell you that the administration would recommend that you follow the advice of our attorney and we would recommend girls' lacrosse if we, if you want us to add a girls' sport because.
And, and I wanna say this too, survey numbers are survey numbers, participation numbers are participation numbers. Okay, so if we're gonna base the finances on participation numbers, that's one thing, but you can't base finances on survey. If fifteen girls say they're gonna do it, like, oh, I'll try this lacrosse, but when you really get down to it and they realize what lacrosse is, maybe it's only nine, now our numbers don't work.
Okay.
So just be mindful of that.
Well, I'm fine with adding girls' lacrosse if that's the recommendation of the administration.
No, that is not, we're not recommending that. We're recommending we follow.
If, if, right, so if we approve boys, that's your recommendation to approve girls, so I'm fine with that.
Do that in July.
I'm fine with doing it in July.
And.
So vote on it in July.
And, and you, you wanna bring back our finances? I mean, I'm just, go ahead. I'll let you go ahead.
I'm fine with bringing it on the agenda for July.
As an action.
As an action.
As an action. Okay.
Are you able to?
I can make it work. I mean, there's money sitting there. We will not be in a deficit by adding that money in for girls' lacrosse. We won't be in a deficit. So I can, I can put it in the budget and it's not a deficit. I don't like it, but there's nothing, I mean, but if that's what the board, but if that's what the board votes, that, that's what we wanna do.
That means that other sports will not get any additional funding, correct? Because of where we're at in the budget, correct?
Say that again.
If they would, if other sports would come to you, if football would come to you and say, I need new helmets, there would be nothing there, right? Or if they would ask.
No, they would have their existing, it would be their existing budget.
Right, okay.
And if a limited number of girls do lacrosse, then the cost is gonna go up.
It will go up. That would be as far as, um, what we, and I would say for boys' lacrosse as well, that's gonna be part of the agreement. We're gonna have to have a minimum number of students.
I don't think you could legally do that. You couldn't charge them a different fee.
You cannot. We can't charge them a different fee.
It's gonna be three fifty where the boys is.
Larger cost of the.
It's gonna cost.
And I guess one thing that's important to know is, uh, at what point do you have to field a girls' lacrosse team depending on how many people?
Well, I think he, he alluded to that in the email.
And I think that's something that Katie will put together as she works on information.
Just some deeper details about that. Any other information that we want from the staff?
So you're, so you're gonna find out, uh, so we talked about cost a little bit, right? It has to be the same as far as the intake. And I guess I, I'd just like to know, how are you going to, like, time-wise, how are you going to encourage or, uh, announce that all of a sudden now you're gonna have, um, a girls', a possibility of a girls' lacrosse team? How do you do that? You know, and, and, you know.
Sign up is here. If you're interested, come to sign up.
Right, it would just, yeah, you would just have information meetings and they would come and if they had enough, that showed up, you have the team and if you, I mean, you would do it early enough that.
So, so I mean, so I just wanna make sure I'm clear though, that financially, you don't like it, but you'll make it work. That's what you're saying?
I mean.
It's not your recommendation.
It's not my, it's not my ultimate recommendation to add.
Add this sport.
Add it, no, but. I mean, it's ultimately the board's decision. If they, my recommendation is that if you're going to approve boys' lacrosse, you need to add girls' lacrosse as well because of the risk that you take if you don't. Based on Jay's advice. And the money for boys' lacrosse is in there, so now the decision's gotta be made by the board whether we, adding boys' lacrosse and girls' lacrosse is feasible.
And at this, at this point, the cost for the boys is a little bit lower, right, because of what they've raised?
We can't, I don't think you can count that money.
Oh, you can't guarantee. They don't have to give that. That's not our money. That's the lacrosse club's money.
What our net amount is nine grand.
Right, the net amount.
That's the highest amount. It looks like.
That's, if thirty students participate, then that is nine grand. So we also have the issue that there could be twenty-five boys that play and then we're looking at a loss of that revenue. It, there is a financial risk, um, with the girls and the boys and I think the numbers as far as a minimum that you have to have to have a team is, um, what we're. There is a financial risk, um, with the girls and the boys and I think the numbers as far as a minimum that you have to have to have a team is, um, what we're, is part of what we would have to decide.
And do you want the parent agreement next month as well from Mr. Greenie? Because I don't know if he can, I'll ask him to get that done, but you always ask us to bring things as information items first, so do you want that as an information item or as an action item?
The parent agreement.
I think you can have that as information, but that would be signed, I mean, you still would approve lacrosse, that would be the second approval, you can do that, informational in July and then approve in August, the contract with the parents, right?
I also think you, you had asked what questions maybe we would want to answer, you really laid out the, the questions in option three that really do need to be answered. And I thought that was a great outline of the facts and data that we still need. So those questions, I think there were three points and then under point three, there was A, B, C, D. So that's like three, four, five, six, seven pieces of information you're hoping to get. I'm not sure you can get all of that because some of it is budget, um, decisions of the state, but I mean, there are some questions you just may not get to, but I think this is what we need to really make an informed decision. The second thing is with the girls lacrosse, as you look at the finances, if we can't charge more activity fee and we're looking at fielding, you know, financing thirty players over here and we only get fifteen girls, but that's enough to field the team and we can't raise the activity, I think you might get completely different numbers.
Absolutely.
And I think we need to see the increments of how much that would go from fourteen thousand to.
What's the lowest number of girls we could have on the team and then what the cost would be, right?
Yeah, incrementally, because you figure every twenty-five.
I think if you fill that team, if there's a minimum number to fill that team, you're obligated to fill that team, you know?
Right, and what would it cost the district?
And so what the cost would be for that, right?
The minimum number.
That's just one more piece of.
It's a good idea.
And I have to be honest with you, I think that's a lot to ask of a brand new athletic director who hasn't even officially started her job yet to realistically, as Cheryl alluded to, to get all that information together for July on our board meeting accurately. So I, I cannot promise that we will have all that. Should I know any way to talk to the kids to find out for sure who's interested other than?
That's my only concern is that the July.
But can't we have the information, girls come as an informational item in August? Why, why couldn't we do that?
I would still approve it, I just don't think you will have that.
I'm just saying, I don't want it to take time to get the girls stuff, but the boys stuff.
I would, I would, I mean, Brian, you might as well say, you might as well say September, because we're going to have that.
If you do the boys and the girls, you can do later on and work through the numbers.
Well, I, I think what we're saying though is that our attorney has recommended that if we do one, we do the other, so I think, you know, we should have the information, right, we should have the information for both.
But I mean, you got to plan it out.
And so if we wait to September, you'll get the information from the girls, you'll have it all in the package, there's no harm, no foul, you don't have to have an answer to February. I know you want to have an answer tomorrow, you know, but I mean.
I didn't say tomorrow.
I know, but, and, and the other problem I have here is beyond all the many issues that I think that we're raising that still are unanswered, is I think you guys counted Beth and she's not here, she's not here to be a part of this conversation or to hear the many questions that have come about. So I don't know whatever email or text you got from the absent board member, but I don't personally think that's responsible for you to count her in and move forward on a discussion that's been this open and vast. This is not something cut and dry. So I think you have a three and three and I think you bring it back for information, we'll try again at the next meeting.
Well, I was thinking in terms of the costs, in terms of the costs.
We all received the email.
I didn't, I didn't receive the.
Can't we, uh, provide what the highest cost would be for girls lacrosse given the minimum, you know, if we had the minimum number to field a team, that would be kind of the worst case scenario in terms of costs?
So the cost, we're looking at, it's really what twenty-five thousand?
What would be the maximum cost?
Maximum cost to the district? Um, you're looking at, those are new costs, I would have to do this because I don't have the numbers on here, but you're looking, it's about thirty thousand dollars for, to run the lacrosse program for thirty. So that's, so thirty, that, it would cost thirty thousand dollars for the girls, we don't have any costs going to the girls right now. So that's what it would be if there were no, if there were no activity fees. So let's say you have, you have ten girls and you're looking at thirty thousand dollars, um, you've got ten girls, they're going to pay thirty-five hundred dollars, so you're looking at twenty-six-five to, for the district. It would cost the district twenty-six-five to run the girls program if ten girls came out, which I would think probably is enough to say, yes, you can field a team based on eight, nine players.
Don't get hurt.
Is it ten players?
Right, no, I know, I don't know what it is, but if it's ten, that's what you're looking at, it's twenty, it's twenty-six-five.
And I guess they.
But that's a spring season also, correct?
It's spring season, yes.
Can we, um, another question too is, um, I know we've been talking about all the numbers, can we contact or get the information from a district that has both boys and girls lacrosse and find out their numbers and the, the cost of their program? I mean, just so we're going into this with, you know, information from somebody who's done it before, you know, and not just speculating on how much it's going to cost here and there. And I mean, it should be a similar school, but I'm back to the point, if you have ten girls show up who can't afford a four hundred and fifty dollar athletic fee or doesn't have equipment, because obviously we haven't had a girls program, so they're starting from scratch, the district is going to have to pay for that, right? As an IHSA sponsored program, so we need to be prepared for worst case scenario. So twenty-five girls show up, there's no money involved, what is the cost of that realistically and being prepared to pay for that and have that money at least earmarked somewhere just in case? You know, otherwise we're just asking for, you know, trouble, you're asking for something. And all of this is, is to be said, and I believe it was, I don't know, two meetings ago that we were having a conversation where we weren't going to vote as a board on our academic programs because we wanted to have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in contingency. And now we're down to twenty-nine and we're just willing to give away fifteen of that without even gathering information? I mean, I get it, athletics is extremely important, all my kids have played sports, but we have four thousand plus students that we as a board are responsible for. And so for us to be have bending over backwards and not answering questions and not making sure the money is there, having our attorney tell us to do one thing and we willing to do something else, having our finance director telling us that, hey, I'm not really comfortable with it, but the board wants to do it, I'll do it. I mean, wow, we're really bending over backwards for a small dozen, couple dozen of students. I mean, that, we really need to be thinking about what we're doing here. Cheryl, you missed a little bit of what I was saying, but I'm, I'm talking about the fact that it was less than two months ago that we were considering not sponsoring academic programs that affected our entire student body. And that it was a question of, we weren't going to sponsor it if we didn't keep two hundred and fifty thousand plus in our contingency. Now, because of OSF and the taxes that we won't receive, we're down to twenty-nine thousand possibly and we're willing to give fifteen of that away just so we can push this forward quickly without asking the kids what they want, without talking to the parents who've been asking for wrestling for seven years, without giving the athletic committee what they asked for, which is to reinstate what was taken away during the deficit? I mean, what is the urgency here? Why are we acting in this way? I don't understand it.
Okay, well, we can, we can discuss it at the next meeting, is there any other information we want to have them provide?
No, but I, did you hear what I said too about the Beth, the board member missing situation? I mean, I don't, I don't know what, Lisa, you can speak to the, you know.
I sent an email out, it was late, um, that.
Yeah, Brian was just showing it to me, but there, there's been a lot of discussion, this wasn't a cut and dry conversation.
I agree.
So I think it's very responsible to take a message, an email from Beth that says, oh yeah, if you guys vote on lacrosse, I'm for it, to take that message and her not having been present at this meeting and assume you have a four-three and move forward, I don't think that's the way.
Well, there's no action.
There's no action, but it's consensus.
Well, but it's a consensus to bring it forward as an action item at the next board meeting that would then be voted on with someone who has not been present in the seat and has not heard the athletic committee speak.
She can't vote, no.
Or, absolutely, but to have, to take it forward to the next step without having a person in here in the seat, I just, I, once again, what is the urgency?
Is there a normal course of action, that we have an information item though, and, I mean, isn't that the normal course, do we have an information item and then an action item?
But I think you were looking for an action item next month.
Yeah.
And I wanted to make the point too that Bethry wasn't here for the previous discussion either, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, did the athletic committee that spoke to us earlier, did they address lacrosse and what their recommendation?
It's in there.
It's in the word. Okay, and what, what is it, what would they, it just says they will make a recommendation.
It's that they support it if, um, the board restores funding to others.
So they don't think we should do it unless we give all the previously funded sports what they used?
Mike can summarize it.
Yeah, and was that a consensus decision?
Yeah, the bottom line was, if there's money in the budget, um, these are existing programs that have been for around for a while, it's not a certain exact percentage, a certain percentage of the budget, and they, they can do about that for a number of years. If there's money in the budget for additional sports and those money should be, if there's not, then lacrosse should not be approved. If there is, then approve lacrosse, but also restore the budgets.
So both, not one or the other?
Based on what we heard from the coaches.
From the coaches or from the coaches and parents?
First of all, we didn't have tons of time for the thought of us and the recommendation that we have over a certain amount of time, so we provided what recommendation we could, um.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, I mean, my sense is that we have four who've said that they support, um, acting on, having this as an action item, but we'll get more information at the next meeting?
And again, I just want to make sure the board understands that we will not have all the information you're requesting because we have a brand new athletic director and her responsibility is to get schools started in August and this is a terrible time for an athletic from now until the first day of school. And so in her defense, I just have to go on record as saying I cannot guarantee that she will have everything you're asking for.
And in that situation, it truly does make it an information item at best next month, but if you have the four votes, then, you know, you have consensus.
And that was why we were asking more time.
We have not voted yet, I, I, this, we have not voted, we'd like to put it on the agenda to, to see if we have the votes to vote on. My, another question is, you know, if our budget is in, in such a disarray, maybe we need to relook at the budget for all the things that we've added and, and, and possibly, uh, be a little more conservative there as well, I, I don't know.
And, and that's an option, but I don't think that those can go hand in hand to make a decision, make this an action item that can be acted on next month unless the consensus is okay not having all the information and even looking at other budget acts, I just being realistic.
Are there other, are there, are there staff that we have not hired that are in the budget, um, or programs that have not been, you know, committed to that are, that are in the budget that could be, uh, taken out of the budget?
No, no, all the, except for the ones that are there for growth, all of the others have been.
So it's just that one kindergarten position or?
And again, I'm just, I want to go on record, we're talking about taking things away from kids in classrooms to add lacrosse. Karen has said she will make it work, but now we're going back to talk about things, and let me finish, okay, let me finish. We're talking about taking things away from kids in classrooms to add lacrosse. She has the money, we will bring you back the information, but I will tell you, this administration disagrees with a recommendation to take things from kids in classrooms. So what are we taking away? You just asked.
Abby was asking for ways to cut the budget, be more conservative, and the initiatives were curriculum.
We're spending an additional two point three million dollars more this year than last year, how do you say we're cutting stuff?
She just asked if there were things that we could take away, I'm just saying, we are not going to recommend that.
But we're spending on our proposed budget, two point three million dollars more money this year than last year and we're talking about, we don't have enough money to go around to certain areas?
We approved, that we, she's saying that we have a budget, I understand the two point three, but that's accounted for, that's allotted for, we've got what, twenty-nine thousand left, right? That's all accounted for. And once again, and I'm, I'm going to bring it to this point, I, I know we had this information, the cuts that we had, we still have it and I know Abby, you brought that up in an email about library aids, that's one big thing. You might not have heard about ban when you were, you know, about talking to folks, I've heard several times about that, uh, all the time I hear about ban. We cut fifth grade, that's a program that we cut that we're not funding back, we don't have those teachers, that wasn't in that two point three. So to, to your point, we did, but that, those funds are allocated currently, we currently have those, so just to keep that in mind that we.
But we've been putting money in reserves for the last couple years of a couple million dollars, which could have been used to support some of these programs, what I'm saying is, we're out of balance.
And I believe this was in March, and I correct, in March, we had a vote, it was four to three vote, to, and, and three said no to the education, just keep that in mind.
To spend all the money.
Well, we, we have.
But still, it was a no vote.
Right, but it wasn't all for education.
Most of it, well, what wasn't? The operations, which that was a net zero.
Which is, which is not any part of this conversation because it was not the ed fund, so that really is.
No, I mean, even the ed, ed fund, it wasn't all teachers.
It wasn't, but once again, in that, in that two point three, that was an at-risk program. It might have been a small one that would only help twenty kids graduate, but that's why we're here too, for those kids as well. And we had three no votes on that.
We couldn't vote on those individually, I mean, you know, we had to vote on those as a whole, which included an administrator, social worker.
But we can't do by an item.
Right.
And it's not that I'm against this, I think we need more information, we have legal counsel that was very clear in his, his, you know, he's been our legal counsel.
But it looks like we have four votes, let's move on.
Well, I don't think you do have the four votes, right?
The four consenses, I guess, the consensus to have as an action item, we can talk about this till twelve o'clock.
Yeah, you're right, you're absolutely right, and this is exactly why, rather than rehashing it and going over, over and over again with opinions, let's wait and give the administration an opportunity to bring us back to question, answers to the questions that we wanted and then make a, a good decision based on all of our students, right? We can make decisions based on a handful, and the other question that I'll ask, not that you want to answer any more questions, but I'd like to know, and I know we had asked before, as far as athletics and the breakdown, because we are responsible for four thousand plus students as the district, for every dollar that we spend, I'd like to know how, how much, how many people are going to participate in the different activities and the break, a little bit of the breakdown, I know we have tried to get that before, but you know, how much are we really spending of the district's money on these different segments and how many kids is it affecting and are we being fair? You know, is it equitable across the board?
For all the sports?
For, for, yeah, for pretty much activities in general, I know we had, it's a big task and I know it's going to take some time, but that would really be something that the board as a whole, you know, going forward, should kind of keep in focus.
You, you, would you, you're, are you referring to a cost per participant?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah, yeah, because if we're spending way high on one end, I mean, and if we got into a Title IX issue, that's what they would do, right? I mean, they're going to go back and see how much you're spending on a football player and, you know, because we've heard it from Chilean, Chileans have to spend a lot of money to participate in that activity, whereas football, we give for everybody. So I mean, there, there's definitely some equitable, equitable things that we need to look at across the board. But for this, I just think there's, you know, tensions are high, there, there's some people that are very much invested in this and I think we, we have to be very unbiased and that's the whole point of having these gentlemen, athletic committee, you know, things like this to me are things that we should give to them. You ask the questions, you do the research, we're not emotionally involved in it, we take the unbiased information from you and make a decision based on that, but you need to have all the facts. That way it takes us out of it, so we're not in this adversarial conversation, we shouldn't, we don't have to do that, right? I mean, we shouldn't be a part of this, we need to all step back, take a step back and let the administration give a recommendation and let the athletic committee give an recommendation and, and base something on that.
Okay, I think since we've talked a lot about this one, why don't we move on to discussion of band uniforms? There will be an opportunity to, to defer if we wanted the next meeting on, you know, there could be a motion to defer, right? Um, or not, or not vote for the lacrosse at the next meeting, so let's move on and see if there are questions about the band uniform bid. Are there any questions for that?
Karen, I know you had rebid it and.
We, we haven't, we, we skipped the tentative budget.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, we haven't, that was the second before we got to lacrosse, I mean, I don't know if that was intentional, but we just can't get past that before.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the FY eighteen tentative budget, um, I'm sorry, before we do this, I, I am actually not going to support the tentative budget, I just wanted to explain, I support, you know, ninety-nine percent of this, but I am not supportive of spending, uh, most of the new money that's coming in. I would rather see some of that money saved, um, given what we're seeing in property value decline, so I just want to explain that before I, before I vote it. Is there a motion to approve the FY eighteen tentative budget as presented?
I move to approve the FY eighteen tentative budget as presented.
Okay. Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the FY eighteen tentative budget motion by Teresa Holthouser, second by Cheryl Bluth, um, could you, is there any discussion? Okay, could you please call the roll?
Stowen?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Fosman?
Aye.
Dishon?
No.
Holthouser?
Aye.
Hummels?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, and now we'll talk about the band uniform bid, it's included in the board packet, were there any questions on that?
I just wanted everyone to comment, um, I think this should have been brought forth as an informational item, um, but I'm okay with it being an action item.
I think the band, it was brought forward as an informational, we talked, the bids weren't, but we never. The bids weren't, but we never bring bid, we never bring final bids back as an information item. We bring, we ask permission to do the bids and then we bring the bids back. The way the bid process works is there's not enough time to take, it can't come back as an informational item to the board to then put it back into the action item. You can defer it. You don't have to vote on it. You cannot take action on it, but there's, there, we don't have another month to, for us as the administration to bring it back as information. The information, it's now the board's decision whether they want to buy the uniforms or